Have we said it? Okay. I apologize for the delay. We had a slightly extended, non-public meeting. So I'd like to call this meeting of the Town Council to order June 10th at 7:10. If you would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and welcome. Upcoming Town Council meetings, Thursday, June 24th, will be a regular meeting at 7 o'clock here in this room, Thursday, July 15th, and Thursday, August 19th are our scheduled meetings for the summer. As you know, we dropped back to one meeting a month during July and August as kind of a summer break. If something comes up that requires our attention, we'll obviously call a meeting and deal with it, but the plan at this point is one meeting a month. That's all I have for announcements. Paul, do you got anything?
I think they gave them all to me.
Huh? What, you know?
I've got a whole page here, so just bear with me.
Oh, okay.
First of all, tax bills were mailed on May 26th and are due by July 1st. Please, if you have not received your property tax bill, contact the Tax Collector's Office at 424-3651 for a duplicate bill. If you do not get a person, please leave a message with your name and address, and they will get one out to you as well. The Assessing Department and Avatar Associates are conducting a revaluation of all properties in pursuant to town RSA, in the town pursuant to RSA 75, colon A, small a. Assessments in Merrimack are updated at least once every five years. Merrimack property values were last updated in 2016. The revaluation will update property values to reflect the current market value. Residents will receive a notice of permanent value by the end of June. They will be, they will be able to have an opportunity to discuss their new property value by scheduling a phone hearing. This is a change from years past. Last year during COVID, this was a change, and it worked out quite well for Avatar. They were able to schedule the phones, people were able to call, they were able to discuss over the phone a lot of things before they sent somebody to the house to check it out or to get a video from the person. So the phone seems to have worked very well in other towns they have done this with. Scheduling will be done online, and instructions will be included in the letter. Phone hearings will begin in July. The next couple basically are all about Merrimack Parks and Rec. So come join Merrimack Parks and Rec Department on Friday, June 11th, at Wasserman Park for a movie in the park. The movie will begin at 8:30, and it's the first movie, free movie, of the summer season. We will be showing the movie Finding Dory, and is open to both residents, non-residents, and we will be giving out free Freeze Pops to everybody who attends. Could have used those on Monday or Tuesday this week. Starting Monday, June 21st, Wasserman Park tennis courts will be closed due to repairs and resurfacing and repainting. The work is expected to take five days to complete, weather depending, and the courts will be closed during this time. We are three weeks away from the town of Merrimack's Fourth of July celebration. On Friday, July 2nd, Merrimack Concert Association will be holding their annual holiday patriotic concert at Abbey Griffin Park from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. Please note that the concert is on Friday, July 2nd, not the standard day before July 3rd. Also, the Fourth of July Parade will take place on Sunday, July 4th, and begin at 1 p.m. This is a special year for the town of Merrimack since we are celebrating the 275th birthday of the town. We are hoping to making this year's parade extra special. Registrations are now open to enter afloat into the parade. Please contact Parks and Rec Department. Due to COVID restrictions, the Rotary will not be offering the annual Pancake Breakfast this year, or Family Fun Day. Annual fireworks display will take place on Sunday, July 4th, at 9 p.m. at Merrimack High School. At this time, there is, will not be any music or food at the high school before the fireworks. For questions, please contact the Parks and Rec Department at 603-882-1046, or visit them online at merrimackparks, with an S, and rec.org. Once again, that's merrimackparksandrec.org for complete details. Just gotta make sure they put anything on the back. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions on the announcements? Seeing none. We'll move forward with comments from the press and public. If anybody would like to make any comments to the council at this time, please come forward. Seeing none. We'll move on to recognitions, resignations, and retirements, of which we have a couple today. We wanted to recognize the Technology Committee members. Last meeting, if you recall, we voted to disband that committee, but asked them to meet one more time so they could meet with the IT Director and set up a relationship so that they could be called on if necessary to help out, to understand what's going on. And so, we would like to recognize their service. I don't believe, I know John's not here. Kevin Cotrow isn't here either, right? So they are the last remaining members of the Merrimack Technology Committee, and we wanted to give them a certificate of recognition for their service. So it says, "In recognition of your service as a member of the Technology Committee, in recognition of your dedication and commitment to public service during your appointment as a member of the Technology Committee, your service and devotion to the committee has had a valuable effect on the community. We wish to extend to you our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance of duty." For John, it was from March of 2011 to June of 2021, and for Kevin, it's from November of 2018 to June of 2021. So we will get those to them and thank them very much for their efforts. Does anybody have any other comments? And you were, Barbara, you were the Town Council Rep most recently.
Did she get a certificate?
Nope, she doesn't.
Did they have their final meeting?
She gets to have her name up on the label.
No, they did not.
They haven't had their final meeting yet, so technically they're still a committee until they have that final meeting, but. But anyway, so we thank them very much for their service, and they're being willing to help out, and the implication that they'll continue to be available to help out if the IT Director, Jonathan, is that right, needs some help or wants some guidance or just wants somebody to bounce ideas off of. So that's item number one. Item number two, submitted by the Rotary Club of Merrimack member Brian Snow, the Town Council to recognize the Honorable Chris Christiansen and the Honorable Robert LaRue for their long-term commitment to the town of Merrimack as state representatives and volunteers within the town of Merrimack. So I want to do this one at a time and invite you to come, to come up to the mic, I guess, if you don't mind, just to be recognized. So Chris Christiansen?
So if I take this off, then I'll really be recognized, right? Me too. I can't give it. I can't get it.
So this certificate presented to the Honorable Chris Christiansen. The Merrimack Town Council hereby recognizes the considerable accomplishments of the Honorable Chris Christiansen for over 30 years of excellent service to the town of Merrimack and its businesses and residents, residential community. Representative Christiansen has been an inspiring example of a dedicated civil servant whose life has been spent improving the environment of our town and the state of New Hampshire. I apologize. They printed it really small because they had so much to put on here. Even with my glasses, I'm having no trouble reading. So Chris Christiansen has rendered service to our municipality and other positions that have significantly improved the town of Merrimack. In 1990, he became the town trustee of the trustee funds, trust funds, a position he's held for more than 30 years. Chris's interest and commitment to the town of Merrimack has taken many forms, such as being a member of the Town Planning Board, working for the Town Parks and Rec Committee, including as chairman, serving as chairman of the Merrimack 250th Anniversary Committee and as a member of the Board of Selectment, including being chairman. Most notably, Chris led a financial campaign which raised over $100,000 that resulted in the creation of the Abbey Griffin Park and the community bed stand of Merrimack. Commencing in 2000, Chris Christiansen was first elected to the New Hampshire House of Representatives and was then successively reelected by the residents of Merrimack for a total of eight terms. During his 16 years of legislative work, Representative Christiansen served as Chairman of the House Committee on Resources Recreation and Development, which oversees New Hampshire's natural resources, conservation issues, control over water pollution, state parks, and recreational areas, and other issues concerning state property development. Representative Christiansen also was active on many other committees relating to environmental issues, outdoor recreation, and international trade during his legislative tenure in the State House. Chris became actively involved in multiple charitable endeavors, starting with the local chapter of the J.C.'s. In 1989, he joined the Merrimack Rotary Club and later received the Rotary Club President's Award in 2013, 2014 for his outstanding public service. Amazingly, he has faithfully achieved 32 years of perfect attendance. Further, Chris was especially involved in the annual rabies clinic, which provided a reduced cost for rabies shots for Merrimack residents that own pets. Between 2004 and 2011, he greatly contributed to the St. Joseph Community Services as a member of its Board of Directors. Thereafter, in 2011, Chris was asked to serve as a director of the esteemed Meals on Wheels program, and he has also actively participated as a volunteer delivering meals throughout this past decade. It is with a great deal of personal pride that the Merrimack Town Council commends Representative Chris Christiansen for his decades of outstanding personal contribution for the betterment of the Merrimack community. Signed by the Merrimack Town Council. So Chris, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Pleasure to serve. Thank you. It's been a lot of fun.
Don't mean to imply that you should go off into the sunset. We hope you'll stay with us.
I'm still a trustee. Still a trustee of trust funds.
There you go. Thank you very much. Further, we'd like to recognize Bob LaRue. The print's not any bigger.
That's gonna be a tough act to follow, I'll tell you right now. It should be real quick.
Presented to the Honorable Robert J. LaRue, excuse me.
Yeah, yes.
Funny letters.
I can read myself.
The Merrimack Town Council hereby recognizes the considerable accomplishments of the Honorable Robert J. LaRue for his many years of dedicated service in multiple capacities for the town of Merrimack. For example, New Hampshire House of Representative Robert Bob LaRue was elected to serve the district from the town of Merrimack for 12 terms, covering 24 years. This is a remarkable period of longevity. His major and longstanding contribution to the Merrimack community has been in the realm of public service. His various public endeavors have included service as Merrimack Selectman, Merrimack School Board Member, Merrimack Auxiliary Policeman, Merrimack Highway Safety Committee Member, Merrimack Solid Waste Advisory Committee Member, Merrimack Library Building Committee Member, and Chairman of the Merrimack Cardboard Boat Race Committee. I miss the boat races. I wish we still have them. As a House Representative, Bob served as both Chairman and Vice Chairman of the Fishing Game Committee during his tenure. In addition to these substantial accomplishments to Merrimack, Bob was also the longtime Treasurer and Financial Secretary of the Notre Dame Knights of Columbus, and as a member and Chairman of the Merrimack Crime Line. Bob's love of the outdoors, which includes hunting, fishing, boating, and camping, has been prominently featured monthly on the locally televised media. His television program entitled Outdoors with Bob was continuously aired for approximately 23 years on local public television. Has continued. I wanted to say was. It is fair to say that Representative Robert J. LaRue has had an incredible impact on the Merrimack community. Bob is well-regarded for being very thoughtful, ever-civically-minded, and a crackerjack with electronics, mechanical items, and all types of sporting goods. It is with a great deal of personal pride that the Merrimack Town Council commends Representative Robert J. LaRue for his more than two decades of excellent working for the benefit of the Merrimack community. Signed by the Merrimack Town Council.
Thank you very much. And like Chris said, I'm not going anywhere either, so you know how to get in touch with me. You got my phone number. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you, Bob. We appreciate it.
Tom, may I say something?
Yes, please.
I think there are very few citizens in this town who have put in the number of years that both of you have provided to this town. You have been instrumental in the development of a lot of the things in this town, and I think it's important that the citizens honor you for that time. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. It is a pleasure to see that kind of longevity and interest in serving, and it's great to have folks in town that are willing to do that and step up. Okay, anybody else? So that brings us to appointments, and we have an appointment tonight with the, for an annual review with the Planning Board, submitted by the Planning Board Chair, Robert Best. Per the Town of Merrimack Charter, Section 6-6, at least annually, there should be an annual review with the Planning Board. This agenda item is to highlight the board's significant actions, current projects, anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns the council should know or could act on. So Bob, welcome. You're by yourself tonight, huh?
I am by myself tonight, but thank you for the opportunity to be here and for the introduction. A few new faces. I'm Bob Best, the Chairman of the Planning Board for, I think, about 11 years now. And I usually come here with a list of, we met this many times, and we saw this many housing and commercial and all that, and I have to apologize that the annual review sort of snuck up on me on my agenda. I didn't have time to bug Tim to get me the list of things that we've done. But it has been a very, very busy year right through COVID. Since, I think, by the last time we met, we were already.
I didn't want to say.
There you go.
There you go.
There you go. The last time we came together, we were already meeting remotely because of COVID, and we continued that all the way through the end of the year and beginning of 2021. We've had now two in-person meetings, and I'm so glad to return to that forum. I think that it's very helpful. Although, there's some certain benefits to remote meetings that allow people to participate when they're, you know, at their office or their home or when it's snowing, and, yeah, in your jam. Public participation's good because it's so much easier for the public to weigh in. We got used to watching and looking at plans on screens rather than having big papers to unfold. But I think the most important part of that was that as the Chair, I wanted to make sure that as COVID finally lost its grip on us, that we didn't have a backup of projects that people were waiting on. You know, I wanted, jobs and projects that were important to people needed to get through the process, and they needed to be ready to go. So meeting remotely was, allowed us a chance to do that for folks, to provide that service to the community. So that was very, very good. Probably the biggest news to share is sad news. On April 16th, our Vice Chair, Alastair Milns, passed away after a long, long battle with cancer. And he was on the board before I was here, and he was the Vice Chair the entire time that I was the Chair. Well, actually, we called it Secretary way back in the days, but he was the only Vice Chair Assistant Secretary person that I've ever known, and we had gotten into a habit over the years where there's all the procedural motions to grant a continuance or adjourn the meeting or approve the minutes, and it was just Alastair always made those motions. And I was just always in the habit, before he even opened his mouth, I'd say, "I recognize Alastair Milns for his motion," and it was a shock when he wasn't here and we were meeting in person, and I think I, out of habit, called on him to make a motion, and he wasn't there. And so it's obviously a very sad time for us. But great service, great guy, great servant to the town, dedicated to the Planning Board and the process through master plans, through, obviously, service on the Planning Board. And if you didn't count him among your friends, boy, you missed out, because he was a great guy. That left us in a place where I think every board is always looking for some extra members, and we already had some vacancies to start with. So with his passing, we had two full-member vacancies and two alternate-member vacancies. I think you've got an appointment on your calendar tonight to fill one of those for us, so glad to see that. But we do have one more full-time vacancy and two alternate vacancies. Nelson Disco still serves as an alternate and gets appointed to fill in to vote every meeting, and I'm sure that he would be glad to be appointed as a full-time member. At the same time, it doesn't make much difference in the process because he votes every time, because the absences or the vacancies in the board. We did get a chance to welcome a new council representative for the first time. I think either Tom, or Bill Boyd, or Finley had been the council representative for as long as I can remember, 10 years, 12 years. It was one or the other of you. And so first time, we've had a new, fresh face from the Town Council in a while. Barbara, probably four meetings, three, four meetings, something like that?
Three.
Three? And it's been great.
Feels like 14, but.
Hopefully not. Hopefully not. So that's, not a lot else that I have to go on in terms of update, or what do we need? We always need new members. If you have any faces, keep announcing it at meetings that, if people are interested in that. Always glad to have someone that's willing to spend the time getting involved and learning what the process is and what the requirements are, and, you know, participating in that part of what goes on in town. For my part, I think it's always very interesting to know what developments are underway and who's planning what, and every time you hear somebody say, "Hey, what's that thing going on over there?" You usually know, and you can answer that night. That's one of the rewards of being on the Planning Board, seeing the plans and kind of knowing what it should look like, and being in the know. And then, obviously, weighing in on sort of what the town will ultimately look like. We are right up on the doorstep of our next master plan. We did our last one in 2013. We adopted it in 2013, so if we're going to adopt another one in '23, it's time to get going. It takes a couple of years to put that together. I think you guys put it in the capital budget for, I'm not sure exactly when it is. It's coming up soon, and we'll be able to have some help from consultants to be able to do that, which is, we're grateful to have that. We wouldn't be able to put a master plan together without that kind of professional help. If you haven't had a chance to dive into a master plan, it looks at everything in the community from utilities and services that people need to open space and recreation, transportation, housing, commercial development, industrial development, all of the resources that are in town, and sort of tries to figure out how all these things should interplay with each other. How do you deal with bike traffic and pedestrian traffic, and what should the development of the Daniel Webster Highway Corridor look like, and where should we combine mixed uses, and all sorts of things like that. And, you know, how much open space do we have, and are we protecting it? And so, once that starts, it's not something the Planning Board does by itself. It's calls to the public to come be involved in that, and certainly, you're the public. You could be a part of it, too. So. Does anybody have any questions? That's really kind of all I can think of to.
Ben, I actually don't have a question, but it's very kind of you to mention my time with the Planning Board, but I don't, I avoid eye contact when we're doing committee assignments now, because the effort, the effort that the Planning Board puts in has been enormous of when I was just doing it. And again, it's been, it's been a good while. It's been Bill Boyd, and Tom Koenig, and now Barbara has taken the torch, so it's like a 10-year commitment, just so you know, but it's, it's a great board to participate in, for sure, and, but it is a bolo to work, and it's good. It's a good group.
But as Bob said, you get to know what's going on.
Absolutely.
You get to have some input, if not a huge amount of input, as to how it might work and turn out. I mean, I affected how Burger King looked by not having blue awnings and stuff and things.
That's true.
When I was sitting on there. And so, I mean, you can, you can have some impacts by requesting the way the thing finally gets developed and expressing, you know, interest and supporting the community when residents and whatnot come in to talk about things that they do or don't like. And, but then you also end up trying to explain to them why you had to vote for the fact that the guy's gonna build an apartment complex there when they didn't want it. They wanted empty space, but it's not their land. They don't get to control it if it's not theirs. And that's one of the problems Planning Board ends up facing as far as the public's concerned, and why we urge people to understand better what the Planning Board does. Speaking of which, we talked at our retreat about doing some additional communication efforts, and one of the early-on efforts will be to try and do a 10 or maybe 15-minute segment on TV that we could play periodically, or that people could look up on Facebook or YouTube, that talks about each of the different committees in town. And we were hoping to be able to hoodswink the Chairman of the Committee to join a counselor or two.
Glad to, of course.
And just talk about what are the responsibilities and actions and activities of the committee, and just make these available so that anybody that does have questions, we can just zip them that link, and they can suddenly get a little bit better feeling rather than looking at a piece of paper and trying to read the technicalities. Gets a little more personal and stuff. So if you're open to that.
Of course.
That's something we're wanting to do in the next, probably next month or so, is get started on it.
Can't promise in the next month, but sure.
Well, not necessarily the Planning Board, because we wanted to start with what's the council involved with and what are some of the other committees. But the Planning Board and Parks and Rec, zoning board are ones that we want to make sure we get something up there as well, because those are ones that we do have some openings on or have had recently, and we want people to feel like they can be a part of the community.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's a great idea, and it gets people to understand what we do. And all of the written things that are out there from either the town or the state that tells you what a Planning Board does are, you know, excellent if you're trying to fall asleep somewhere.
Yeah.
It's, you know, dry and lengthy and complex, and it doesn't start with any kind of a narrative that will lead you through the whole process to make you say, "Oh, I got it. Now I understand it." So having someone talk through it, I think, would be very helpful and outline what it does. And I agree with you. There's all sorts of comments from folks in town that'll say, you know, "We don't need another gas station," or "We don't need another," you name it. And I guess that presumption is that there's somebody that decides what we need, and if there is, it isn't us. It's not our role to do that. The property owner gets to decide what they want to do with their property, within the regulations. We can design the regulations to encourage certain things by establishing a zone for elderly housing, or a zone for industrial developments and that sort of thing. But, yeah, we don't get to decide that, you know, you name it, a cheesecake factory ought to be built in the old building that somebody thinks ought to be redone, whatever it might be. So. I did neglect in my initial comments to thank the staff. Tim Thompson and Casey Wolf and Robert are great at the work that they do for us. We couldn't do it without them. And it's not just having staff. I think we got the best staff. I sort of encountered different towns and their government and planning boards as a part of my day job, and I'm always sort of encountering a situation where I say, "Boy, I wish Tim was the guy across the table from me," or Robert, or somebody like that. We've got really great people, and we got to make sure that we're supporting them and thanking them. So I wanted to do that as well. And obviously, thank you to all my other fellow Planning Board members that are there doing the work, too.
That sounds encouraging, and there's nothing predominant that you're looking to us to try and modify or change or fix, or other than getting more volunteers to be members, is at least what I'm hearing, unless there's more you want to add.
No, there's nothing more that I want to add. When you were talking about communication and, you know, from the Planning Board or others, I also sort of connect the Planning Board to the National Regional Planning Commission, where we have members from Merrimack that are appointed to it by the Planning Board, and we're always looking to have more communication from them as well. So I'm familiar with that idea with, "Hey, we don't hear from you enough." So let's do better. I'm glad to do it.
Okay. And I think we have an opening on the NRPC as well that we need to fill, or should fill. So there's Planning Board openings, one full-time and two part-time or alternate members at this point. You have three alternate members?
There's normally three alternate positions and six appointed positions plus a Town Council Representative. And we will have, when you guys are done tonight, we will have one full and two alternates. Right now, there's, for the moment, there's.
Yeah, I was kind of assuming that was gonna pass, but.
I hope so. Well, you and I were there to interview Jamie, and she did a great job, so I think it certainly has my support if you guys are curious about that.
Great. Are there any other questions?
Thank you. It's nice to meet the new folks here that I haven't seen before.
Did you, did you meet him, Nancy Murphy and Andy Hunter? Bob Best has been our chairman for, what, ten years, you said? Something like that? Ten or eleven years, somewhere there.
Very good. And on behalf of the Rotary, we'll get to that Fourth of July thing next year. We'll get it back.
Please.
The planning, the planning horizon for those events just takes too long. And even as we sit here today, the schools still aren't letting outside groups use their facilities. So as we plan the Turkey Trot at the middle school, we're still sort of waiting for them to adjust their rules to let us in and use the interiors. And so, and they will, I'm sure, but that's why we couldn't get it done this year, even though it seems like things finally have loosened up. It just didn't loosen up early enough to plan those things for us.
To really be able to plan it, because you'd be stuck trying to make pancakes out in the parking lot, right?
Yes, absolutely. And beyond Fourth of July and pancake and all of that, the Rib Fest, which was normally in a couple of weeks, is, at least for this year, morphed into an Oktoberfest. So look for that in mid-October. Anheuser-Busch, Saturday, the middle of October, the sixteenth or something.
Saturday, the middle of October. Okay.
Anyway, there's my two cents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate, appreciate the Rotary update as well. And thank you, Len, for joining us. Which brings us to a public hearing, but we don't have any schedule for today legislative updates from state reps. I do have some inputs from Representative Maureen Mooney. She says, greetings, town councilors. HB 236, an act creating a statute of limitations on civil actions relative to damage caused by perfluoroalkyl and polyfluoroalkyl substances passed in the House and the Senate and is headed to the governor's desk. Her second comment, the Senate version of the budget, HB 2-FN, Senate amended version, includes a provision to remove the exit 10 north and southbound toll booths by January 1 of 2022. You can see Page 183, Section 394-394-A. The committees of conference between the House and the Senate have yet to take place on the Senate version of the budget. The vote on the budget is expected on June 24 of 2021. Thanks for all you do. Respectfully submitted by Representative Maureen Mooney. Seeing nobody else. Are there any questions that we want to pass on to our state reps? Or anything else we want to cover underneath legislative updates? Seeing none, we'll move on. Town managers' report.
Thank you. I make sure they print this a little bit bigger so I can read it. Once again, bear with me. There's a lot going on in this town, as you know with the announcements. Excuse me. And there's a lot for the town manager. DPW is very, very busy at this time. The annual street sweeping program is complete. The program removes sand and debris from the curb lines to the edges of pavement for the town's 180 miles of road and municipal and school parking lots. Public Works Department is pleased to announce that our five summer engineering interns have begun work for the town. Four are working in the administrative division on stormwater programs, assisting the town engineer with related tasks, and one is working with the wastewater division to assist in continuing implementation improvements of asset management system. Public Works would like to congratulate George King on his upcoming retirement. George is an equipment operator in the Highway Division for the last eight years. Congratulations, George. Public Works would like to welcome Chris McKenna to the Highway Division. Chris is working as the equipment operator one. Booze Creek Lake Road, Turkey Hill Road intersection improvements project is underway. If you haven't been out there, it's a mind-boggling transformation of what was there versus what's going to happen. Today, Turkey Hill Road between Bossum and Booze Creek Lake Road was closed to allow for construction. This stretch of Turkey Hill Road will remain closed through most of the project. A detailed route on Joppa Road extension is in place to guide motorists around the closure. Glenwood Drive will be closed at Booze Creek Lake Road. No traffic will be allowed in or out of Glenwood Drive for the project duration. The contract to execute and reduce scope of Phase III upgrade at the wastewater treatment plant has been signed and executed. Phase III construction will begin on July 5. The town submitted Clean Water State Revolving Fund pre-application for items removed in the Phase III project, and we hope to receive grant money through the proposed infrastructure bills. A new stormwater multi-sector permit was issued to wastewater treatment. The notice of intent was certified on May 1, 2021 as part of the permit. We will be required to quarterly collect stormwater samples from the four outfalls and evaluate each sample for, conduct a visual assessment of each of the samples, analyze the samples for chemical oxygen demand, COD, total suspended solids, TSS, and pH. The sampling analysis requirement is new component of this permit. And finally, a team from Boston College that has been performing a sediment movement study since the removal of the Penachuck Dam will be performing some field work in the Salhegan River next week. The Department of Public Works will give access to Professor Snyder and his team to access the river through Watson Park, but the gate will remain closed to the public. The work is expected to last at least two days. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments on the town manager's report? Seeing none, we'll move right along. We have no consent agenda for tonight, which brings us to old business. Number one under old business is an update on COVID-19 guidance submitted by the town council chair, Tom Koenig, and vice chair Finley Rothouse. The town council to discuss the latest COVID-19 guidance as it relates to the town facilities. As you recall, back in March, or somewhere about that timeframe of 2020, we basically closed Town Hall and all town buildings to outside people, non-employees, and went through a mask requirement and blocked off seats in here and did a lot of things to try and mitigate the COVID-19 spreads. And throughout this past year and three or four months, we've been following along with what the governor has suggested as far as generally, how do we handle things? We opened Town Hall back in June to be able to continue to do business, but we required people to wear masks to come in, and we had Plexiglas up in front of all the different staff people and protected them, and required them to wear masks whenever they were interfering, interfacing with another employee or somebody from the public. And including that, we went through Public Works, and all of them had to wear masks if there were going to be two of them in a truck at one time, and do all these things to keep the six-foot guidance, and wash your hands, and wear your masks, and all that kind of stuff. We're now reaching the point where it seems like we've passed the curve on COVID-19. The governor has today announced he's dropping the emergency mandates throughout the state of New Hampshire. Many businesses are starting to open up and allow people that have been vaccinated to go without masks, and urging or requesting people that have not been vaccinated to continue to wear masks, in the hopes that that will continue to try and mitigate or relinquish the spread of COVID-19, which is still there. It's just not as prevalent now as it was throughout this past year. And so the question, I guess, before the council and open for the discussion is exactly where do we go within the town of MRMAC, and what guidance do we want to give not only our employees, but the public interacting with the employees and the use of these facilities and things of that nature? You want to add anything to what I just said, Paul, or?
If I could, Mr. Chair. As referred to Chairman Best said, effective Friday, tomorrow or Saturday, all meetings have to be in person again. So there are some, we have two meeting rooms. Most of the meetings will be up here, occur up here, but there are those occasions where there is a meeting that's occurring up here that will need to be moved into the memorial room as well. I foresee the memorial room being reopened to the public for meetings, committee meetings, probably around July 1. There, as you guys saw today, there's some things going on at Town Hall with, that we're using that for some extra storage space until projects can get finished up. So if we're going to open up that meeting room to the public or to other committees, I would ask for that to be around. Let us do that at the end of the month, beginning of the next month. I included in your packet something that I got from a local business, Market Basket, and we called them, and they were gracious enough to allow us to put that in the packet. And if we want to use it, they gave us permission to use that as well, where vaccinated versus unvaccinated for masks. And they basically said that if you wanted to change it all, go ahead. We, we're happy, we're happy that you saw it, and we're happy that you want to use it, kind of deal. I have some stuff from NHDES that basically says that, from May, middle of May, that they're looking at, NHDS will closely monitor COVID-19 infection rates of vaccination uptake and reevaluate face mask use recommendations in the next three or four weeks. Vaccination rates increase and community transmission decreases. NHDA expects to fully implement CDC guidelines by the end of June. And this was sent out by NHDES May 17. So with the governor not extending his emergency mandates anymore, I guess what we're looking for, I'm looking for, is how does the council want to proceed with vaccinated, unvaccinated? Do you want to just leave it up to optional? People who want to wear face masks can, people who don't. Do we want to make it, you have to be vaccinated, or unvaccinated people have to wear face masks? It's, we're just looking for your guidance on how you want us to proceed. The other thing is that because of some HIPAA requirements, I cannot go up to a resident and ask the resident if he's not wearing a face mask, if he was vaccinated. So it's a little tough to parse that out. I plan on leaving the Plexiglas up at the tax collector's office, at the assessing office. Finance is behind a window, but even in the town manager's office, the Plexiglas will stay in those areas for protection of our employees. And I hate to say it this way, but I think we've got used to having that up and working through that. So for a little bit longer, I'd like to keep the Plexiglas up, and let's see how the summer progresses, if the council so deems so.
I have no problem with leaving the Plexiglas up. I don't have any intention of MRMAC becoming the face mask police. And so, as they do where I work, I work for Texas Instruments, and they've opened up their offices. They've said masks are required for unvaccinated people, but nobody's going around asking questions and not required for fully vaccinated people. So they were suggesting that people continue to wear masks if they are not vaccinated at this time. I think the suggestion of wearing a mask, especially if you feel comfortable with that, if that makes you feel comfortable, then by all means do it. Makes a lot of sense. But I have no intention of going around and trying to card people or ask them or challenge them whether or not they're vaccinated. One, I think we can, and two, I don't think it's our responsibility to do that. I think people are adults, and they can, they can take care of themselves. At this stage, they're taking the risk, in my opinion. I've been vaccinated, and so I feel like I'm protected somewhat. People argue with that one way or the other. That's fine. But, so I'm taking a certain level of risk by going around in public today, and I think they're, anybody that's not vaccinated that chooses to go around without a mask is taking that risk as much or more. And that's their choice. I don't think it's our job to push that any further than we have already. And I'd like to remove the seat blockages and stuff like that and let people be responsible for maintaining their social distances and stuff, because it's a health factor. And there's been less flu, there's been less various different things because of all of the protections people have been taking. And if you kind of keep that in mind, it doesn't hurt to go ahead and keep some distance and not be falling all over each other. Does anybody else have any thoughts they'd like to share? Finley?
I agree with the bulk, if not almost all of what you said, but I, I too think it's a personal responsibility situation. And my only thought of the paper you sent from Demolis was Shaw's had, we encourage people who have not been immunized to wear a mask. I prefer to handle it that way as far as, as opposed to required.
Required, yeah, I agree.
And I, as far as the Plexiglas, I don't have a problem leaving it, but I think it's unfortunate that we're so deep in that zone in our lives now. It's become part of our psyche, and it bums me out. I do, not to get into any science of it all, because I'm not that kind of person with that type of knowledge, but if, you know, I fear this constant cleansing, the constant face mask of what will happen when we're, when all of these protections that we naturally have are no longer with us. So the sooner I can get back to normal, the happier I am. I, I too was vaccinated, immunized, and I, two weeks later, I felt liberated. I believe in it, and I, you know, I'm happy I did it, and I'm happy to be done with my mask and everything else that goes with it, so.
Nancy Harrington?
I totally agree. I would like to recommend it as well. The only other thing I'd like to request is, what does the council feel about returning to our normal seating up here, rather than having extensions?
I, I'm okay with that, just like I'm okay with removing the restrictions out in the, in the field there.
So next week, you can set up...
I know that we're all vaccinated, I believe vaccinated. And if people are comfortable with it, then okay. If you want to keep...
That's what I wanted to ask.
Further distance, you can, you're welcome to do that, and we can work that out. So it's, I think it's an individual...
So Paul, if you have any discomfort, let Paul know, because next week, we can, if there's no problems, we can set up as we normally would. I like being out here.
We're going to put you back in the corner with a little Dutch cap.
Thank you.
Barbara Healy?
So are you looking for a motion, or are we just saying agreement that we're going back to, we're removing the mask restrictions and the spacing restrictions, that type of thing?
Just making fixes.
Paul, what do you need?
Lon? I'll get back to that question. We're going to debate that.
Well, I was just going to comment on that question. I, I believe we made some formal motions.
Yep.
For this, for that, for other restrictions. I think it only makes sense for the record to have a motion to... Just continue.
So I think the motion should be that if you're vaccinated, wear a mask at your own risk, and if you're not vaccinated, we recommend continued use of face masks or following the CDC guidelines for your own personal protection. Maybe that would be it. Maybe somebody wants to make a different motion. That was not a motion. It was just a comment.
And on top of that, the remove the spacing within the chambers, even for the town clerk's office and the staff in the town hall who have Plexiglas in front of them, you may get to a point where people don't want the Plexiglas. Some will, some won't, and that could be an option as well for staff.
I would...
In the future.
In the fut, if, I would ask the council if you would let me be able to make those changes to the buildings as, see fit.
The town manager's job, I guess, and I would be comfortable leaving it to that position.
Right.
That you would manage your people and...
Exactly.
Health and safety of them.
Right. And the only other thing would be the opening of the conference rooms to the public.
Which Paul alluded that we almost have to do, but we're going to try and push that off to July 1.
If, yes, please. At least the one downstairs. I don't have a problem up here, but there's a lot of meetings that occur in this conference room. It's, as you, if you haven't been to Town Hall and been in that conference room, there is a project going on right now in the town manager's office that a lot of the furniture is sitting in that conference room. That's the only reason why, for the public. That's the only reason why I'm asking for July 1, because hopefully in the next week, things will be back to normal in my area. So.
Yep.
So in terms of the other properties within town, that would hold true as well? General Larry Center, the Police Department, the Fire Department, they'd all follow that same... Wasserman, exactly. All of the properties?
We're going to follow the DayCamp regulations that have been out from the state. They were given out by the state, so we're going to still be following those regulations as well. Um, with day camps and what they say for masking.
Yeah, so I don't think we want to interfere with that.
No, right.
But if the governor's lifting his emergency order, that may impact the, his ongoing-
Right.
Re- recommendations there as well, so, but we'll let that stand with what Matt's got going.
And the library, do they have their own or what?
Library, I talked to them yesterday and I told them what we talked about at the retreat, about the mask. And I said, I know you have a lot of touch with children under 12 years old. Um, you can, basically the trustees can set their own rules. And the library will, I think they're gonna follow basically what the town has said, but we really don't deal with that under 12 category like they do. So they'll have to make their adjustments.
Probably have guidelines from their own associations.
Right, their organizations. John O'Leary, I talked to, uh, the gentleman who runs, uh, Steve Dumbo. And, uh, he sent me, oh, two letters. One for what's gonna be going on if somebody rents the place. And then one telling businesses, hey, we're back open. Right now, they're in legal review, um, to make sure that, uh, all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. Once we get those, he'll have the approval to open up the O'Leary Center as well. Um, all town facilities, meaning transfer station, highway garage, police, wastewater, fire-
We're all behind this.
Will be all underneath this. Um, the only thing I do ask is that, um, you allow us till Monday or Tuesday and next week for implementation of whatever you vote on? Because I have to get notices out to my employees. Cause just because she took away wearing the face mask, doesn't mean we don't follow guidelines for international travel, cruise ship travel, and when you're returning from those things, um, and, and other, you know. If you're not feeling well, don't come to work, kind of deal. So we have to get all those out to the public, uh, to my employees, not my public.
Right. Nancy Murphy?
Thank you. Um, I just want to clarify, would the guidelines that we would be recommending be in compliance with the CDC guidelines? Given that we've got new variants, children under, young children are not, uh, immunized? I'm just thinking like library situation.
What's the state say? The state says that hopefully by the end of June, they'll be following CDC guidance. I don't know, I don't know, because like I said, I don't, we don't have a lot of children under 12 working for me-
In your staff.
Or, or, you know, or coming to the buildings. Usually if it's with the parent, the, it's the parent's responsibility to either put a face mask on the child or, or not. Uh, under one, I think, they don't need a, they don't need face covering. But most of the children that I see, um, come in with the parents do, do have it. Or they're the ones reminding mom and dad, hey, we gotta put our face mask on. So, uh, I don't know what the school's gonna do, they're a separate organization, they have their own rules. Um, as, just more for the public than the council, cause I know you all know this. They have their own rules, they set whether or not they're gonna wear masks in, in the classrooms or not. Um, so I don't know what they're doing as well. Um, so right now, we're just looking at, we're gonna follow the CDC guidance for, for camps and those are some kids that are under 12, so.
From my perspective, it, it's a, it's a plea for people to take care of themselves and be responsible. So if, if, if you're concerned about your health, then deal with your health. If you do that by wearing a face mask, great. If you do that by washing your hands, great. If you do that by staying home when you're sick, that's even better. Um, you know, don't, don't go around sharing your illness with everybody because we don't want it. Not that we don't want the people, we just don't want you to share your illnesses. And, and so that's where I would suggest that we, we make our presentations, you know, to just, just, uh, this seems a little overboard to me. Um, and the pictures seem even worse. I think a simple notice that says if you're vaccinated, face masks are not required. If you're not vaccinated-
Gets recommend-
We recommend you wear one.
Okay.
And then leave it at that. And people can, can behave or not as they see fit. I don't know, does anybody else have different thoughts? I mean, I, I, especially with kids in the library and stuff like that, I think parents are responsible for their kids until they're 18. And they need to take that responsibility and be adults and, you know. Not something we as a council can, can legislate for them.
The only, the only exception, I agree, this is much too long. But perhaps we consolidate that section that says if you are not feeling well. I think that paragraph is fine.
That's an important paragraph, yeah.
Right, so we, perhaps we can put, you know, a sign that says, uh, if you're fully vaccinated, masks are not required. If you are not vaccinated, it is recommended mask wearing or something. And in that same post, put that one paragraph.
Okay.
You know, cause I, then you could say, I think it's important, we're saying, please don't come in if you're not feeling well. But here is the link for the online services. I think that's great. So just that one block associated with that mask guidance, I think is fine. Cause I agree with you, Tom, it doesn't need to go into this depth.
Uh, after a year and three, four, or five months of reading those, those lists of things- Yeah, I mean, I, we all know that. If you've lost your sense of taste, you probably have an issue to pay attention to or smell.
Are we saying on this page, delete the top portion and leave that bottom paragraph?
Yes, and at the top part, put just the masks.
Okay.
So it's one piece of paper with less verbiage-
Yeah.
That people will pay attention to, really.
Is that enough guidance, Paul, for you to put something together? Or do you want us to micro-
No, no, uh, I'm sorry, Sharon's texting me right now. Cause she's gonna be the one doing this-
Yeah.
For me, so, um, alright, so just to reiterate, if this is the council preference, we're gonna leave this if you're not feeling well. And then just a note saying, masks are not required for those who are vaccinated. Masks are recommended if you are not vaccinated.
Yes.
Encouraged, recommended, yeah.
Alright, great.
Encouraged, yep.
We can do that, let's keep it simple.
Okay.
Are you telling me she's at home and watching this?
I have very dedicated staff.
You really do.
They, 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 they're watching it for me.
Wow, you're gonna get blowback on that.
Oh, big time.
Good luck tomorrow.
I'm buying lunch tomorrow, I think.
Wow, now you are.
So, no, if that's the motion-
Do you want to make a, does somebody want to make a motion incorporating what we've been discussing?
Oh my god.
Could be, I incorporate what we've been discussing.
I think she's ready, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion.
I move that, yeah.
I move that, the operational, uh, oper- optional wearing of face masks. Recommend if, we, we do recommend it if you have not in fact been vaccinated. The removal of the current distancing protocols for the conference rooms such as Matthew Thornton and the others. Uh, the town manager will be responsible for determining the removal of the Plexiglas barriers where appropriate. Conference rooms will be open to the public starting in July.
And how about all other, this will be all-
This includes all public-
All public buildings.
Public buildings.
This includes all public buildings.
And implementation in Monday, starting Monday.
And implementation starting Monday.
Implementation to start Monday, June 14th.
Second.
Okay, any other additions, changes? Andy?
I, I, I just want to ask a clarified question. I, I thought we only wanted to keep the memorial room closed to the beginning of July. Are, are we gonna keep all other conference rooms closed to the beginning of July?
Actually, I, I don't even know that we have to mention that because that would be a prerogative of the town manager regardless, because work's going on, people can't use it. And so I don't even know that that has to be mentioned, I think the date of Monday, the 14th, if, if that's what it is.
So in other words, it's business as usual.
And we will, we will schedule and just know that, we, we'll tell them that, we can't schedule it. We have discretion on that, so.
Right, because co- because our criteria tonight is not impacting that. That's a different issue, has caused that to be closed.
I just, so you want to drop that phrase from, from the motion, that, yeah.
And I agree with the removal.
The phrase saying that the conference rooms aren't open until the first. That's, that's availability defined by the town manager.
Yep, that'll work, that'll work, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed or abstaining? That passes 7-0-0. I don't have an objection. I didn't object from the beginning.
You're gonna keep it on just to be, yeah, you're just be-
Keeps you out of trouble with your daughter, right? Sorry. So town committee assignments. We had, um, town, oh, town committee assignments, sorry, old business. This was this other question. Last time we, or a couple of weeks ago, we talked about committee assignments and we set up various different things. Uh, but there's been a request to make a change to, um, put Andy Hunter in as Conservation Commission Council Rep? Is that right? And let Nancy stick with the, uh, the, uh, the what?
The HB 737 Commission, PFS Commission at the State House.
Okay. Without objection, anybody else have any other thing that they would like to adjust from where we are at this point? Seeing, seeing none, we'll just make that happen because I don't think we need a motion on that. We just wanted to talk about it and make sure that it was clear to the Conservation Commission that Andy's gonna be the representative, uh, instead of Nancy Murphy. Okay? Sound good? Good. Okay. So that brings us to new business. And that is new committee, or committee assign, committee appointments, committee appointments. So Finley and, Finley and I, were you there?
No, I wasn't, I was out of the state.
He was out of state. So I met with, um, the, um, chairman of the Parks and Rec Committee, and also with, uh, chairman of the planning board to talk with James Devlin, David Shaw, and Jamie Von Schoen um, about membership on Parks and Rec for James and David, and planning board for Jamie. And, uh, we were impressed with all of the candidates. Uh, we went through a large discussion about what, uh, those different boards do, how they're involved, what goes on. The chairman went through a lot of description of the time commitments and things of that nature. And everybody seemed amenable to those requirements. So we're recommending these three people get appointed to a three-year position, um, on the various boards. So it would be James Devlin and David Shaw to the Parks and Rec Committee for three years each, and Jamie Von Schoen to the Planning Board for three years. That's the recommendation from the interview committee. How's the council feel about that? All three of them? Okay. So a motion made by Lon and seconded by, uh, Nancy Harrington to, uh, accept the recommendation and appoint these, uh, folks to their respective positions. Any other comments? I kind of opened up with a comment that we interviewed all these people and they, they really seemed to be enthusiastic and, um, would, would make a great addition to the various different committees. So we were excited about having them, so, um, with no further ado, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed or abstaining? So, um, help me with your name. David.
It was a 50-50.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking it was David, but I, but I wanted to make sure. So I don't have, do I have? I do? Oh, it's here. Okay. So Dave, I can, I can, wow, you did. I can swear you in, if you want to meet me over there at the mic?
So you're going to read this, this part there. Alright, hi, sorry. Hi, David Shaw, you saw me swear and sincerely swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me as a full member of the Parks and Recreation Committee, according to the doctor's liabilities, agree with both the rules and regulations of this constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help me God.
Thank you.
Nice desk. It's always easier over there.
It was when we had a flex.
Did you bring a sweater with you?
You're cold too?
I have no sympathy for you. Nancy, Nancy, are you comfortable? Barbara?
Absolutely.
Are you comfortable or are you chilling?
Maybe we could knock it up.
No, 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 don't do it, it would be five.
He has to take responsibility. You know what, we're gonna have a jacket permanently placed here. We're gonna get a jacket for him.
He needs a blanket.
Thank you, thank you, David. It's a great committee, by the way.
So, and congratulations to James and Jamie as well. They need to stop by the town clerk's office to get sworn in before they can be official on their committees. But when they do that, everything will be all set and they'll have paperwork there for them to sign as well, so.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's that.
So that brings us to, um, we had at one point talked about, um, the, uh, the longest day, um, event, the hot dogs for Alzheimer's. And, um, we dropped that from our agenda. But I wanted to take a minute to, just to point out that that event is coming up. Uh, it's been going on for, I think, six years now. Uh, and they're expecting to sell about 2,000 hot dogs this year, uh, which is an amazing event. Bob Bergen and his team of, what, 12 or 18 committee members, Nancy, you're one of them. I'll, I'll kind of pass it to you to talk if you will in a minute. But, uh, Alzheimer's is a, is a devastating disease. If you're not familiar with it, um, people lose their mind. Uh, dementia and, uh, then eventually the entire body shuts down. But it can take an extremely long time. Uh, and it's, it's, uh, it's affected me personally because my mother died from Alzheimer's and her twin sister. Um, and she was in a nursing home for half a dozen years. And, uh, it was really sad when you would go to visit her and she wouldn't recognize you. She would still laugh the way she always laughed, you could tell it was the same person, but she had no clue who you were. You know, and fortunately for me, I didn't have to, to deal with that very often. My sister took care of her a lot. And I only got to see her once a year or something like that, cause living up here and she was down in Louisiana, it was a long distance. But it was really a sad situation and Alzheimer's, it, it's, it's a very mean disease cause it, it not only takes away that person's life, but it takes away all the people that would interact with that individual. So I, I think it's important that we try to reach out and help, like we do with heart disease and everything else. Find ways to solve those issues and to take care of those, those problems and find a cure for Alzheimer's or find a way to prove what it is or how it's going or what it's doing. Back then, they didn't even really know if you had Alzheimer's until after you passed away and they could do an autopsy on your brain, uh, to check it out. I don't know if that's improved or not, do you? I, I don't think so. I mean, it's, they, they, they can tell by dementia and various other things, um, the lack of memory and, and stuff. But, um, it, it's something that I think we all need to try and reach out- But it, it's something that I think we all need to try and reach out for. It's been getting a little bit more notice. This effort that Bob Bergens does with Hot Dogs for Alzheimer's, it's a pretty simple thing. You know, a couple of hot dogs, a bag of chips, and a Coke for whatever donation. Five dollars. I always make more. But, you know, whatever, whatever you feel like, they're, they're raising money for Alzheimer's research and they're not keeping the money here in town, they're sending it off. Can you give us any more background, Nancy?
Sure, I just, I, I too, my dad had Alzheimer's. So, I think everybody knows somebody that's, if it's not in your own family, you have a friend or a neighbor. And as you said, Tom, it's not only the, the, the person who has Alzheimer's that's impacted, but their caregiver and their families. And, and Bob Bergen's done a phenomenal job, phenomenal job for a number of years. He's so committed to this and coordinates a huge team of people. And rain or shine, people come, not everybody purchases hot dogs. Some people come just to make donations. But I know that from eleven AM to seven PM, we'll all be there. And we would love to see the Merrimack community show up and support this event because it's, 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 it's a, it's a really important one. So, that's all I wanted to say.
This is held in the parking lot outside of Our Lady of Mercy.
Yes, in the parking lot.
So, there's plenty of room.
Yes, yeah.
The twenty-fourth is a Thursday.
Correct.
And they call it the longest day because Alzheimer's is such a long thing, right? You've lost, you've lost your memories, you've lost your loved ones, you, you know, and it, and it can carry on for years. It's not one of those quick things. It's not a painful disease, per se. I mean, I don't think my mother suffered. Except for the lack of understanding of who she was with. I mean, when she started doubting her husband because she thought, or doubting her daughter because she thought she was trying to take her husband away and things like that. Those are the kind of things that really tear you apart. But as far as physical pain, there's not a lot of that until things shut down. And then things are, I mean, it's typical at the end of, end of life. But anything that we can do to support that, I, I'm personally interested. I'm gonna be helping out Thursday, the twenty-fourth. We have a council meeting that night, so I can't go till the end. But for a couple hours in the evening, I invite everybody to come out. At some time during the day, eleven to seven. Their biggest hour, is it noon, Bob tells me, but, so you might wanna skip that. But come at one o'clock or two o'clock or something like that. Or four to six, I expect to be there. So, I encourage you to come out and support the program.
Hope to see you all there.
All right.
Paul, and if you're interested in volunteering to help that day, please contact Bob Bergen for more details on looking for, if you wanna volunteer.
Do we have a method by which we can touch with him?
Call the town manager's office.
And we'll get him in touch with you.
We'll get Bob in touch with you. In touch with the people.
Great.
Right now. And actually, I think, what's the website, Nancy? Hot Dogs for?
She's gonna tell you in just a second.
Because you can go on their website, too, and volunteer that way and sign up.
We'll find it.
We'll find it. But it's, I got the hat, I'm just trying to remember what it says on the hat.
It probably, it's probably in the Hamptor Hot Dogs, D-O-G-Z.
Hot Dogs for ALZ.
So, you can go on that website. Once again, it's Hot Dogs with a Z.
Dogs with a Z.
H-O-G-D-O-G-Z for ALZ. It's on Facebook.
And that's F-O-R.
Yes, correct.
ALZ, right.
Yes.
Okay.
So, yes, so that's the way people can get in contact with him.
Okay. So, thank you for that segue. Which brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is, in fact, the Merrimack Village District is seeking, so what's the title of the item? Merrimack Village District, MVD, requesting a letter of support to NHDES relative to well, MVD six. This was tabled at the May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one town council meeting, submitted by MVD Board of Commission Chairman Don Preventure and Superintendent Ronald Minor, Jr., and Jamie Emery. Merrimack Village District is seeking town of Merrimack's support in pursuing Brownfield's grant funding through the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, NHDES, to assist in the remediation and monitoring of groundwater contaminants derived from the former Merrimack Industrial Metals Site located at seven thirty-four Milford Road that caused adverse impacts contamination to the former MVD production well, MVD dash six. Hey, and welcome. Thanks. We got just a second, I think we're gonna call in somebody as well.
Are you calling in Emery?
Yeah, we're calling.
Jamie?
John, his name is Ron, Ryan Allen.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, there we go.
That's better.
Yeah, Jamie couldn't make it tonight from Emery and Garrett, so he has a stand-in.
Hey, Ryan, this is Justin over at the Merrimack Town Hall with the town council.
Hey, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
We're, we're just queuing up the agenda item for you, so you're, you'll be, you'll be online here.
Okay.
All right.
Make sure he knows we can hear him.
Thank you.
And we can all hear you. We can hear you right now, so.
So, behave yourself.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Ryan. We have Don here at the chair and Ron Minor in the background to support us. Don, you wanna start us out on what you got here?
Yeah, I, thanks for having us here. I probably don't have all the answers, that's why we've got Ryan on the line to help out. But we're just here tonight to sort of get a pulse from the council of interest for putting forth a letter to the DES. There's, there's a grant money available. I'm sure Ryan can explain how much money is available. But what this is, is for Brownfield's programs. And what Brownfield is, is a site that has sort of fallen by the wayside due to contamination, as you had read in the summary. And that was, that site was the former site of the Merrimack Industrial Metals. There was some contamination in that site. You might be aware that well six was shut down, I think, in the late eighties. And then, just a few, several years ago, MVD attempted to test that well and see if the water quality had changed. There was another contaminant that was discovered, one for dioxane as well as PFAS. But, so well six was decided to not bring it back into service. But if the site that is expected to have some influence on contamination on that well, which was this Merrimack Industrial Metals former site, this Brownfield's grant can be used to clean up that site, you know, that would put us moving towards a direction of trying to improve the water quality out there. From what I'm told, I think MVD six is the highest yielding well that MVD had. So, it would be nice to be able to bring that back online. And this may not be for years, decades ahead of us. But, so, that's, that's kind of it in a nutshell. I believe the, the grant looks for a letter of support from the town and that's kind of where we're at here. There's no obligation to accept anything at this point. We could come back in front of you. I'm not sure who the money is awarded to. But with that being said, I'll probably turn it over to Ryan at this point and have him sort of do a better explanation than I can about all this. Thanks. Ryan, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, yeah. Thanks for having me today, tonight. Yeah, so, like Don said, it, you know, there's been contamination there at the old Merrimack Industrial Metals Site. And it has contaminated the ground. And, you know, this Brownfield's, you know, project that could possibly happen, there's, you know, there's funding for this type of, you know, situation where there's, you know, the reality is that there's a property in Merrimack that no one can do anything with. It's pretty much been orphaned. So, this program can revitalize this property, you know? And it can, you know, to, to the point where something could be developed on that property someday with, with this funding, you know, there would be a study done. And there could be remediation and some kind of mitigation plan done to do this. And so, there'd be two things, you know, we could, you know, there could be, you know, something done on this property, whether, whatever it is, you know, like a business or something like that someday. And also, at the same time, we would be working toward improving the groundwater quality around the production well that was once used, like, like Don said, back in the eighties, before it was shut down.
So, let me just quickly ask, is there, you said there's not a cost to the town at this point, but do, do we have to acquire the property and become in some way on title or liable in order to be able to promote this farther, or?
No, I mean, we would, we would discuss first. I mean, that's, that's a little far ahead. We would discuss with the state first, whether or not, you know, this, this property could be, you know, receive funding. So, we'd go there first. I mean, right now, I don't know, you know, I went on the town GIS website and it still says that the industrial, Merrimack Industrial Metals still owns the property, but I don't even know if anybody's still around because there's, everything stopped over there as, for, because there was at a time that there was remediation going on at San, you know, and, and that ceased because the, you know, they weren't paying for it anymore. And whether the, the owner's deceased or, or what happened. So, so, right now, it's just, would be a conversation with the, with, with the NHDES to see if, you know, this property would fall under the guidelines of that, where we, you know, funding could be approved and to move forward with the Brownfield's, you know, funding.
Okay.
For this property.
All right, thanks. Paul, did you wanna add something?
Yeah, the property is still with Merrimack Metals and the heirs of, of the owner of Merrimack Metals. It has been, the town council has not taken it for tax dealing. I'm wondering if this is kinda like the other property we have off of Wright Ave where the EPA came and cleaned it up. And afterwards, they really want us to take the property over for tax dealing, but the liability issues from the town, from our town attorneys, recommended we don't do that. So, not to be the wet blanket here, but I think it's a little premature with the council on this because we don't know what the legal ramifications would be if we do write this letter of support to the state regarding the cleanup if they're gonna want the town to take over the property, eh? You're talking about redevelopment. We've had three properties in town now that have been either EPA cleanup sites or state cleanup sites. And the restrictions have been so onerous that basically you can't do anything on it. You can't even dig more than two feet on two of our properties. So, I don't know how a business or somebody else would be able to go in there and build again. So, there's a lot of questions related to this. And like I said, I don't wanna be the wet blanket, but there's a lot of questions out there before the council, I think, can consider writing a letter of support that need to be answered from the state to the council.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, this is what that, that meeting would be, just somebody, a representative from the town to just go and we could, you know, and, you know, we, you know, could be there to facilitate, facilitate this, this meeting, too. You know, as, you know, the groundwater consultant for the MVD. And we could just talk about that and we could ask those questions to the state. But under the, you know, under the Brownfield's funding, that, that's why it's out there. So, because no one wants to take the, the risk and the, and the amount of money to purchase a contaminated site, you know, because then they'll be responsible for it. So, that's why this program is out there, to, to be able to take that away, you know, from the town or from a developer, that they don't have to worry about that part and they're not liable. So, that's, that's the whole deal about the, the Brownfield idea, the, the Brownfield funding that's, that, that's out there.
So, in just a minute, there, there are four bullets in here that, that try to describe what we need to send to DES. And the first one says a strong interest expressed by the town that their one environmental issues address. And I don't have any problem with that one at all. The second one is a statement from the town that access to the property would be granted. Not that we have that, but I suspect it would be getting, granted by anybody that owns the property now if there, if there was gonna be a cleanup. The, the third one is a conceptual plan or vision for redevelopment of the property. And right now, we don't really have that. But they might kind of slide on that one, I guess, to, to get the,
Right.
the, the letter of interest. And then the fourth one is a work scope from an environmental firm to investigate and remediate the property. Do we need to get all that together to send in this letter, or that would be follow-on projects?
Well, we, you know, we could work with you, you know, with, with town to get, you know, get something in order. I mean, there's no timetable on this, you know? There's still, you know, there's funding available for Brownfield sites, you know, every year. So, I mean, we don't have to move quick on it if, you know, if you guys wanna sit on it. But, you know, I think it would be a step in the right direction, at least to have a conversation with the NHDS. You don't have to commit to anything. You're not taking anything over, just talk about it and just see if this is, you know, right for the town. And, you know, you know, doing something to, like I said before, revitalize this, this property down the road and to clean up the, you know, the groundwater in the area.
Okay. Barbara, you had a question?
Yeah, can I just clarify or validate the address with you? It's seven thirty-five Milford Road?
Milford Road is one oh one A, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Because this, they, this is already being followed by the EPA. They attempted to do a cleanup of the site from October to December nineteen ninety-nine. There is an EPA site contact on scene coordinator, his name is Brent England. So, this may be further along than you already think. It may already be a Brownfield site.
Right, they are. I was gonna say, I think it was PC Connection was gonna expand parking or something. And they, there was some remediation through the Brownfield's program, I guess. But that, and I, that may be in nineteen ninety-nine, it goes back a number of years.
You what?
That's from the EPA site itself.
Did you say seven thirty-five?
Seven thirty-five Milford Road, which is one oh one A.
Because the agenda request says seven thirty-four.
Might be.
I think it's.
All just one big lot. What's a number amongst friends? I mean.
If, if there, if a meeting can be had before sending of any letter, I'm looking at you, it's the phone, I should be looking at right. Sorry, Dave. I, I'm not opposed to the meeting, I think that's a good idea. Because if we can take, you know, if we can get some.
If we can take any steps forward, yeah.
Yeah, would be good for that site. I, quite frankly, I'd be shocked if we ever pull water from there, but who knows what the future holds with technology and filtration, I don't know. But it's, but, so I'm in favor of that. If, if there's a meeting to be had before the letter's sent out, I, I'd like to hear the, you know, what the impacts would be to the town.
I think that might be a good opportunity to get some of your questions answered because I'm, I'm not able to answer these questions right now at this moment, so. You guys sound like you know more of the history than, than I do at this point, so.
Some of us have been around a while.
He's an old guy.
So, what you're actually coming here is to request we send out a first, a first letter requesting that they consider it, right? And, and from there, we'd probably end up with a meeting and from there, we could follow on to decide whether we're gonna go forward.
Yeah, I don't know, Ryan, if, if we need the letter upfront or can we have the meeting without the letter? What, what's your opinion on that?
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can try to reach out to the DES and just, you know, try to, try to schedule a meeting without a, a letter. That's, I don't see a problem with that.
Yeah, I think if.
Try that route first.
I think if we have a lot of these questions answered, it would give credibility and more strength to the letter if we knew exactly, you know, what you were looking for.
What to put into it, yeah.
All the questions about ownership and whose permission, you know, who needs to grant permission for this. I'm sure the owner still has, or the heirs of the owner, whoever's technically the owner of that property has to have some input, I would think, unless they just are interested.
I'm pretty sure they've abandoned it, but, yeah.
If they're still paying taxes.
No, they're not paying taxes. We're, we're refusing to.
Take it?
Take it by a tax deed because we don't know what status or we don't wanna assume responsibility for it.
Right.
Because it could go into the millions and millions and millions.
Understandable.
The document here says it has to be abandoned. Pardon? It, it says that the property ha, has to be abandoned and lacks financially viable.
owners. So, if there's still a owner, I don't
Well, they're not financially viable, I'm sure, but
But have they abandoned it? I mean, what, what constitutes a, an abandon?
I don't know, that would be things we'd have to clear up with NHDS and/or EPA if they're still actively involved on it. Lon?
Yeah, I'm a little bit, um, either behind the eight ball or confused, I'm not sure which. The, um, the history I remember, um, over there, there was more groundwater contamination that was a concern. Uh, yes, there were, there was talk about soil mitigation and finding a home for that, however deep they wanted to go, but the problems that we were having at the time I was over at MVD with well six or the groundwater contaminants, the plumes of which were on the, um, Merrimack Metals property, so that if we tried to pump well six without any kind of treatment, we were going to draw that water into the well. I can't tell from the letter that you've written us, and I can't really remember, um, other than there being what they called a pump and treat system where they were trying to mitigate the pollution by drawing water into the air and letting the VOCs at the time were the main contaminants, um, fly into the air and be gone in the water. My concern is that it, at a point, yes, the family that, or the, the company or whatever, Merrimack Metals, uh, couldn't pay for the treatment, DES had agreed with MVD to set it up, and they came to us and said, "We can't longer run the pump and treat system because there's no money for it." All of which brings me to tonight or to this request saying, "You're telling me now DES has a pot of money that they're going to release to someone for a question mark in terms of being able to get at the real contaminant." How far afield am I on?
It should be on, right?
I believe you're right on, right on it, Ron. Ryan would be able to answer more of that, but I, I, I believe you're, you're, you're correct. Yes. They've, uh, have a pot of money and looking to, looking for, where, uh, places to spend it.
Yeah, this, this was brought to our attention, um, from Jamie when he, um, realized, I guess, that there was funding available and I guess it probably crossed his mind that this might be a good opportunity for this property, um, and, and maybe there's an opportunity to continue that pump and treat airstripping, sounds like it was, was in place there. Um, I don't really know much, much else more than that, and I think this is why we've gotta probably meet with DES and see how this can all unfold and really figure out, you know, what the benefit is. It sounds like they're looking at, um, the potential for the property to be developed at some point in the future. You know, I know this is, I'm not really sure exactly how far it is from well six, but it's in the vicinity, it has an effect on well six from what I've been told. Um, so, you know, if there's any chance in the future of resurrecting that well, it's not gonna be done without cleaning up the area around there, and if this is an opportunity for that, that's the only reason that it seems to be a benefit to look at it, you know? If it doesn't go anywhere, it doesn't go anywhere, but, um, maybe just to look into it a little further and see exactly what the drawbacks and the, um, the benefits are and, and then make a better informed decision. But we didn't, we couldn't go at it alone because it needs, it needs the town to be involved in it, so we just kinda wanted to make sure that, um, there was an interest, and if there is, then maybe we can take it to the next step. And again, as far as I've, I've been told, is there's no obligation on, on anybody's part, there should be no cost on anyone's part, and, um, if, if it doesn't pan out to be what we think it is, you know, we can always decline the, the grant money, so. Um, I don't know if you have anything more than I just said, Ryan, to offer, but, um, what, where do you think we should take from here?
Yeah, I mean, you, you mean, you don't even have to apply for it if you don't feel like it's the right decision for the town, so, I mean, it's just, it's just a meeting to talk about, to learn more, a lot, where the state is at, you know, how much money is available, um, and, you know, they're the ones that are gonna, you know, decide this.
Okay.
And, uh, and I, I think, I think, you know, just being able to have that, that, that talk with them might, you know, like someone else said, is gonna answer a lot of questions and the direction that the town wants to move.
Okay. Barbara?
I guess I'm really confused because it sounds like this is the, starting the process for an application to declare it a brownfield site and get funding for that, but according to the EPA website and according to the DES site listing brownfield sites, this address appears on both. So, apparently, in that, whatever that was, December 1999, they had the EPA in to clean it up because they were going to sell the land and the sale fell through. That's documented. So, if that's already happened, and it's already on the list of brownfield sites, see my thought here? It's like, what are we doing?
Is it the fact that there's funding available now that wasn't before perhaps? I, I don't know.
I don't know.
Maybe just bubbling it up to the surface to get it reactivated or something.
Well, it may, it may have been project-specific as well, because again, I don't remember the detail because it was likely the 1999 project. It was, as I remembered, yeah, right, and as I remembered, I, I believe PC Connection was expanding parking, they were gonna pave over, and I don't know what the remediation was, but it was, that, that might be it, so it might've been project-specific.
Did they have a leak in over there in that area? Was that the project?
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't have to say.
PC Connection is one long building now, but it used to be Alexander's supermarket and it used to be the movie theater.
Correct.
Right. Wasn't, when PC Connection took, wasn't it, I'm trying to think, wasn't it behind the movie theater in that area?
That's where MIM is, right?
Yeah, right, right in that area, that's where it is, but did, I don't know what they might've done or not done to connect the buildings, I, I don't, I gotta look at it.
Nancy?
Uh, just in summary, I think it's, I'm in support of just an initial discussion. With all of those questions in that initial discussion, Barbara, you know, a smart find
Is it a brownfield site? If it is, is it active?
I think one discussion would probably answer, first of all, is it even eligible? Has it already been done? That ends that discussion. If no, it's been approved, but we didn't have the money and now we do, that leads you, so I don't think there's anything, there's no commitment made from our side, but it's purely, I'm in support of at least an initial discussion to have all those questions answered.
Lon?
Are you suggesting that prior to a letter?
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, the letter is basically asking for the discussion, isn't it? Or no?
Well, I would like to suggest that a call be made
Yeah.
And see if it can be just be done under a request. If they need a letter from us that we support the initial discussion, okay, we can decide that pretty quickly.
Can he say in his phone call that the town of Merrimack is interested in this? I mean, I think that's what they're looking for, is the town to back it up, whether we back it up with a letter or just a, a, a interest
Yeah, see if, see if they need it.
Just to give them some backing to
But literally, it's just, the only thing we would support is an initial discussion.
Lon?
I thought the request for the letter and the intent was that the town of Merrimack, um, uh, would, would be in support of the MVD pursuing this grant, not the town of Merrimack pursuing the grant. Am I wrong?
That's exactly the questions we need answered.
Well, I think that's part of the discussion, the town of Merrimack is, is in support of
Like who's gonna be the applicant?
Helping MVD to do that. I, I think who is actually doing the, the grant request and stuff is a little open to
Like who's gonna be awarded the grant? I, you know, I don't know.
Who's the applicant?
Which is my real consternation about, a good friend of mine once said, "If it's not in black and white, it isn't." Okay. A request for a meeting with DES Water Resources people, whomever, I can't remember all the, but is one thing, but a written letter is another. So, I, I don't have any problem with, uh, Ron and, and Dawn and this Ryan fellow, I guess is Jamie's representative, maybe?
Yes.
Um, requesting a meeting and, and inviting us to attend somehow.
Somebody, yeah.
That's as far as I'm willing to go at all, right at the moment.
Yeah, I'm wondering, um, Ryan, you've heard these questions this evening, is it possible to call DES and see if you can get some, some advance answers to some of these questions that were raised this evening?
Yeah, that's no problem at all.
Or even if you can just get a meeting, I'd be more than happy to attend the meeting to, to answer those questions with you guys. So, if we can get a meeting with DES just to go over it before
Yeah, there you go.
We move
Okay.
The next step, if it's okay with the council.
Great by me.
Absolutely.
I'm in support of that.
Okay.
I could always use a more, few, few hours more of, uh, out of work, so, yeah.
Just off Friday afternoons.
Be careful what you ask.
All right, so, so once we have a better understanding of where, where this whole thing may or may not be going, I think we'd be more interested in, in pursuing that.
So, some kind of a meeting to get some basic questions answered about what the status of the property is and, and what it is gonna need and whether things can even reactivate.
That sounds great.
Okay.
Sure, so, so Ryan, if you wanna try to work on, uh, setting up a meeting and maybe, um, asking some of those questions, we could also, um, follow up with Paul and let, let him know some of the answers, and, um, if we can get a meeting scheduled, then we'll take it from there.
That sounds great.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thanks, Ryan.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, everybody.
Take care.
Bye.
Just pick it up and put it down.
And look at Dave over here, cause that's where the sound was coming from. I'm going, that was weird.
That brings us to our next item on the agenda, which is the third quarter financial review submitted by Finance Director Thomas Boland.
When did we do the second quarter? Wasn't it three weeks ago?
At the, just a few weeks ago, it seems like.
It seemed like it.
So, Finance Director Thomas Boland will review the key financial information of the quarter ending March 31, 2021. That was a long time ago. Thirty, 2021.
Yeah. Um, so that, so the, the third quarter numbers obviously reflect nine, nine months of the, of the fiscal year. Uh, happily, I can say, uh, looking at those numbers, uh, I can give you the same report that I've given you after quarter number one and quarter number two, that, uh, we're in good shape, we have sufficient appropriations to, uh, to, to manage the operations of the town through, uh, we expect the balance of the fiscal year. Um, obviously, uh, as, as happens, life throws some curveballs at you that you, you didn't anticipate when you were preparing a budget. Uh, it's important to keep in mind that, that the budget for this fiscal year was prepared in, uh, late 2019 and, and approved in the very early part of 2020, which was obviously before all the COVID stuff kinda hit the fan, as it were. So, um, obviously, none of that was, was anticipated, but we've been able to, uh, manage our way through that, um, and, uh, as I say, uh, we're in, we're in pretty good shape for the, for the shape we're in. Um, as usual, we, we kinda like to take a look at the, the major expenditure areas of the town, one of which is, is health insurance, um, look at the, at the trends, uh, over the past several years, uh, as well as, uh, we can give you a, a comparison to where we are with respect to the, uh, the budget. Uh, looking at this chart, this shows a 12-year history of our, um, health insurance costs, the, the town's health insurance costs for its, uh, full-time employees. Uh, and obviously, you can see back in 2016, 17, we kinda restructured the, uh, health insurance, uh, benefits, went to a, a different type of plan with a, with a high deductible, and we're able to bring down our, our health insurance costs significantly. Since that time, they've been creeping back up and we're, you know, we're, we're almost, uh, while we do have some more, more employees, the, you know, the gross numbers are, are kinda back to, to where we were. Obviously, if we had the same kinda plans that we had at the time, we'd be exponentially higher, uh, than that, but, um, but health costs have been creeping up. The increase from, uh, last year to this year is relatively minor, rates were up just slightly, um, but we do have, uh, a few more employees on, on the plan, um, so the aggregate numbers are, are higher than they, than they were in the prior year. The budget town-wide, I'm sorry, did you have a question?
I just want, can you remind me again, this chart is for each of the years only showing three quarters?
Correct.
So, so this is apples to apples, you're not looking at a full year versus only three quarters of a year?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Just for anybody that's watching to make sure that, that we're all aware of what's going on.
The other thing to remember is that our mix changes, meaning we hire XYZ personnel, they might be single, they get married, now they start a family. So, our mix, our census is ever-changing. So, even though we got a great rate of, of little to no increase, and we have more employees on here, the mix changes as well. So, we could have more families versus two persons, more singles versus two persons. So, just wanna bring that out too, it's not just increased cost associated with the plan, it's the census also changes and the census is very dynamic, because back in October of 2019, I can tell you the census is a lot different than the census I have that we're paying today for health insurance, for the number of singles and things of that sort.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
No problem. Um, so in terms of the, the budget, the budget for the full fiscal year for health insurance, um, for fiscal 2021 is $3.4 million. So, at $2.4 million through the first nine months, we're at about 70% of, of that full year budget number, uh, which is obviously a favorable, uh, situation, and, and we should have some overall, um, cost savings, uh, in those line items, uh, by the end of the year. Uh, it won't be huge, but it, there will be some savings there. Um, and the even better news is, we just received our renewal rates for, uh, fiscal 21, 22, and for the first time in, uh, my memory, with the, with the plan staying the same, the rates have actually declined slightly, so. Um, Health Trust certainly has, uh, I know they, they returned some surplus in the last couple of years, so obviously, they've, they've been adjusting their, uh, projections and, uh, the result is that, uh, at least going forward into next year, uh, the, the rates have, have shown a, a little bit of a dip, so. That's good news. Moving on to New Hampshire Retirement.
Lots of good.
Uh, yeah, not, not as good, uh, not as good a picture, although not quite as bad a picture as, as, as is reflected on this chart. I, I discovered an error in these numbers this afternoon as I was, as I was going through this. Uh, the group one numbers, uh, in fiscal 2021, I included the, uh, uh, numbers from the wastewater treatment department and the media department, whereas in the past, we have only included general fund numbers, uh, here, so I apologize for that. Hopefully, the new guy is allowed at least one or
One mulligan, yeah, that's right.
Just one.
I, I was getting nervous because this was still underneath my rain. I'm like, what am I doing with New Hampshire Retirement so high?
Do you know, Tom, do you know the actual number then?
The actual number for group one, um, is 438,000, um, just a little bit over 438,000, um, compared to the prior year, which was compared to the prior year, which was four hundred and four thousand. So it is up slightly. The rates between the two years are the same, but as you'll see in the, in subsequent slides, we have incurred a significant amount of overtime in certain departments. Obviously, fire and police are separate from the Group One discussion, but even among Group One employees, particularly in departments like dispatch, communications, with all the COVID-related issues, overtime is up in those areas, and that's resulted in a, in a, a little bit of an increase in, in our New Hampshire retirement contributions. But it's not as bad, at least in the Group One. The other numbers are apples to apples for fire and police, but the Group One number is skewed here because of the mistake.
And for those Group One numbers, that's everybody but police and fire, which is about over a hundred people in, in that Group One that we look at, that includes pay raises from one year to the next, too. So having a bump from four oh four to four thirty-eight with the overtime, with the pay raises, it's not alarming to us. It's, it was budgeted for.
It was. In terms of the, the budget number for the entire fiscal year, that's two point seven million dollars. So with the adjustment made, we're at just under two million dollars through the nine months, which is seventy-three percent of the budget, which is right about in line. So even with the spike in, in fire, which is primarily the result of some overtime that we'll talk about next, we are pretty much tracking right, right according to budget, so we're in.
Do we expect more overtime during the summer with, with parks and things like that?
I wouldn't.
I guess we're halfway into the fourth quarter already anyway, or most of the way. We only have another couple of weeks in this fiscal year, right?
Couple of weeks, so for this fiscal year, no. For next fiscal year, potentially. There are, there is a little bit, but we're not doing like what we did last year, where we had park attendance, meaning either police, DPW, working, Watson, or, or Wildcat Falls. So in that respect, no. But once July, August comes around, there, there is overtime associated with that. So if, if we see the uptick in traffic, we'll adjust accordingly, and there might be some overtime to cover those.
Okay, thanks.
And to, to just kind of throw out the, the warning flag, as, as we discussed in the fiscal twenty one, twenty two budget proceedings, we are facing a large increase in these retirement contribution rates starting effective July one. So these numbers are, but, but that's, that's reflected in the budget that was approved and voted on. But when we look at these comparative figures next year, we're going to see some, some jumps because the rates have, are going up pretty significantly. We touched on it a little bit, but in terms of overtime costs, again, this slide, we really, the focus is, is pretty much on fire because that kind of dwarfs the other departments.
Is this your second mistake?
No, I'm, I'm afraid I can't say that this one is, is a mistake. The fire overtime has, has spiked significantly compared to prior years. A lot of it is, is COVID-related. You've got, you know, COVID-related increase in, in, in calls for the, the fire department. You've also had fire department employees that have been exposed to COVID and, and been out of work as a result, and other people have had to fill in and work overtime to kind of fill those roles. That's been a significant portion of it as well. We've had our firefighters have been helping out at the COVID vaccine sites and things of that sort. So all of that contributes to that very tall number or bar chart that you, that you see there under the, the fire department.
And remember, this is, we have to gross appropriate. So those vaccinating clinics that Tom talks about, we got it reimbursed for. Last meeting, I asked it for two hundred fifty thousand dollars. A lot of this overtime was included in that money we got from FEMA. But because we're gross appropriating and we want to show you what actually happened and not take that out, this is what's actually happening with the fire overtime. In addition, remember when COVID first hit, we, we ran ten firefighters twenty-four, seven during the first, from March until almost September, October. And then we backed off of having that extra eight hours when the daytime attendance were there. We budgeted for this overtime with the fire department. I just want to make that clear to people out there as well. Is it shocking? Yes, it's shocking that it's this much when you look at this chart. But we budgeted for it, we got reimbursed for, we're getting reimbursed for a lot of the COVID expenses that we paid. But because the way we do things, we're gross appropriating, that's why it looks like this.
Okay, thank you.
Similar to what we've talked about with the health costs and retirement, just to give you an idea where we're at in regards to the budget, the budget for the full fiscal year for the overtime for these departments is one, one point two two million dollars. So obviously, at, at almost a million two already through, through nine months, we are going to be significantly over budget here, but as Paul just mentioned, there are offsetting revenues that we were able to recoup through the COVID grant process. So it hasn't severely impacted the town, fortunately. The next slide kind of takes the fire department away, so you can see a little bit clearer what's going on in, in other areas. Police overtime is, is actually down compared to the, the prior years, and I think that reflects them getting some additional staffing and haven't had to or been as impacted with having to, to have overtime as they have in the past. Communications, which is obviously tied very closely to the workings of the, the fire department, overtime there is up for many of the same reasons that, that we've already discussed. Highway, you'll see overtime is, is up a little bit as well. In terms of the, the winter, while we didn't have a ton of snow, we had a, a, a large amount of snow events, I guess, small little storms, more so than we had in the, in the prior year. So the, the total amount of overtime spent there is up a little bit, but not anything that's, that I would consider alarming. And solid waste here is, is showing a slight decline. Yep.
So with the police, just for everybody, we budgeted overtime for the police because we brought that special unit in, Drug Task Force, to go out and do things. And remember that Chief Roy came in and said, while I'll get these officers trained, I'm going to need to backfill, and we're going to need to do a lot of overtime. So now that those positions came in, we knew we were going to spike prior years, and they came down. I'm sorry for the history lessons, but I don't want to make it seem like, oh geez, the police stopped doing all, no, it isn't because of that. It's because a lot of this stuff in these presentations and in these budgets, you can actually see that the town council looked at it during the budget process, budgeted for it, and in the following year, they took it out because of plans that were put in place, and the departments are living to those plans.
Okay, thank you.
And this is just a further breakdown of, of some of the smaller numbers in that overtime category. You can see general government has, has declined compared to the prior year. Other departments is up, that is primarily buildings and grounds, again, due to the COVID protocols that were put in place, the additional cleaning protocols that, that we've been using since we reopen the town hall facility and other buildings in, in the town. This is also the time of the year where we, we take a look at electrical consumption by department in the towns to kind of see how we're doing, if there's any, anything unusual in terms of the trends that we see, that we would need to, to act on. And you can see that in terms of, of kilowatt usage for departments in town, most departments are showing a very small increase. And there are a few departments, primarily library and parks and recreation, that are showing a decrease, and that's because those are, are areas where parks and rec, day camp, got shut down last year, and the library was closed for an extended period of time, and even now has reduced traffic. But that's why you're seeing the reductions, which kind of makes sense there. The slight increases in the other departments, it's all pretty consistent and reflective of.
Costs.
Kind of, yeah. The normal, normal course of business and, and a few extra bodies in the, in the town offices.
So streetlights are nice to see down around a hundred or ninety or something like that. Is that in line with the expected savings we were expecting?
Yeah, actually, that is in line with the LED streetlight project we did. We should start seeing next year at this time in building and grounds, fire, police, highway, a decrease because we have done LED lighting upgrades. Highway, we were expecting an increase because we have two buildings operating now. We have the new highway garage and the old highway garage, so we were expecting that. Yes, streetlights are down where we thought. They're, they're up a little bit, which, which is surprising, but it's not, they're, they look like they're back to the two, the prior year. So that's right around where we want to be. It looks like it's back a couple of years. The other thing is why we do kilowatts and not costs? It's because we, I, we town signed a long-term contract for electrical consumption. So we're not paying the, the rate that every, every source is charging. We actually have a rate, and I believe it's right around seven cents a kilowatt, that we, that we pay. So by keeping these kilowatt usage flat, we are able to keep our electric, electric costs flat from budget to budget.
Great.
We also take a look at, at natural, natural gas usage. And these, these numbers, this chart reflects the, the therm usage among the, the town departments. And it's a similar story really to what, what I just showed you with, with the electricity. We've got a little bit of a, of an uptick in, in most departments that where for, for these nine months, operations were, were more or less similar to the prior year in, in departments such as library and parks and recs. We've got, we've got a little bit of a decline reflecting that, that those facilities were, were not used the same way because of COVID in the current fiscal year. But nothing, nothing really out of the ordinary that, the bump in, in highway, as, as Paul just talked about in electricity, we're still kind of phasing in the, the numbers that reflect the usage of, of two buildings at that facility compared to, to some of the prior years.
And once again, we have signed long-term agreements for natural gas. So if they go out, I think, twenty twenty-two, so that's why.
Yep.
Jumping over to the revenue side, on this chart, really just kind of focus your attention on, on auto registrations, which thankful to say, continue to, to chug along. We are up from the prior year, we're, the, the budget, budgeted number for auto registrations for the full fiscal year of twenty twenty-one is five point six million dollars. And we are at four point seven million dollars through nine months, which is eighty percent of budget. So we are, we are ahead of the game. I actually looked today, I just got the, the numbers from May. So if you look at, at where we're at, as of the end of May, we're at five point four million dollars versus a total budget of five point six million dollars. So we'll, we'll be a little higher than that budgeted number by the end of the year. So people, keep buying those cars.
Doing my part, guys, I'm doing my part.
This takes a little deeper dive into building permits and, and interest. Interest is the one I don't like talking about because it's, it's ugly.
We were just starting to get something that blipped up on interest, and then there it goes again.
It didn't last too long. So interest is, is down significantly. Budgeted interest for the, the full fiscal year was, we adjusted down to three hundred and sixty, just a little over three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We're at a little under seventy thousand dollars through the first nine months. So we're gonna, we're gonna miss the mark there as a result of the, the dive that interest rates took once COVID had us firmly in its grasp. So not anything that we could foresee, and who knows what will happen down the road, but that's, that's where we're at with, with interest. This number through nine months with regard to building permits shows a little bit of a, of a downtick there. But I can tell you, in the last two months, we've had a flurry of activity with some of the big development projects in town. So we are now well ahead of the game in, in building permits. Building permits budget for the entire fiscal year was a hundred and seventy-five thousand. We were at seventy-one percent at the end of March, so running slightly behind budget. But through the end of May, we're, we're up now to two hundred and ninety thousand dollars in, in building permits. So we've already exceeded the, the budget number and.
Yeah, the difficulty with budgeting that is that's a very cyclical number, which in the wintertime, you don't get much and.
Right, we were wondering if the, if the flurry would happen in the spring, and in fact, it has. So that's, that's a good, a good thing.
A lot of people waiting till after, after April first to request building permits and actually do start their building. The reason why April first is such a, such a good date is that is when your values are set. So a lot of these pieces of property will still get the, one more year kind of of, of that freedom of, this is my value as of December, so. But we, we pick that up as well in the, when we do our budget. So for these projects, we'll know next year that we'll have X number of value increase, X number of millions. So I'd love to take credit for, you know, the interest in the cars and, not the interest so much, but the cars.
You got it.
The building permits is all yours. But I'll take, I'll take the, the bad credit for, for the interest as well. Revenues in projections, we're gonna, we're gonna have a surplus in revenues, not just in these three major things, but there's other things, too, that are, that are looking at increases. We didn't talk about the rebate that we got from the insurance companies, but that was around two hundred thousand dollars that we weren't expecting, so we got money there. We tax overlay account, which is a contra-revenue account, basically. We have significant savings in there, and tax overlay is for abatements and things of that sort. So we're, we're looking, you know, potentially of another two hundred thousand dollars. So you start adding up these, these revenues, and they far exceed what we're, we're losing in, in interest revenue.
Right, what did you say, it's, what kind of revenue source was that, contra-revenue?
Contra-revenue account.
I've not heard the term.
The tax overlay.
Right.
Where we set aside money, but if we don't, if we don't do, provide rebates, then that effectively looks like.
It's contra, it's not a revenue, it's a contra, so it's a negative revenue account.
I've not heard that, you've used that term.
I haven't heard you use it that way either, but.
But it's, going back to when I was like learning accounting with the, the tablet, we used to have like a right side and a left side for revenue. And if you put the money on the left side, it was revi, you know, a credit. And you put it on the right, it was a debit. So if you had those things, that, that became the debit on your contra revenue.
It's a debit on your revenue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I did not think we'd be talking debits and credits tonight.
It's a long time ago.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
We are in good financial shape. This town is in very good financial state. We do have a good fund balance. That is why we could come, like we did the last meeting, come forward and ask the council to let us purchase 700,000 dollars for the radio equipment is because of the state that we're in. As we show here with the revenues are exceeding it, we have excess appropriations. And we would not have taken that if we didn't have these excess revenues to offset this. So I just want to let everybody know that, that we are in good financial condition. I, I do see another strong year ending June 30th. For those that don't really know, we go out looking for the grants and helping offset as much as we can sometimes in, in some of the spending. You know, I hate to say we're, we're out there with our, but, but we bang on doors and we look for every opportunity for this stuff. And we talk to our resources of federal government funds and things of that sort. So it's out there and I do not foresee that changing with the change in leadership in the finance department. Because that's been going on for a long time now. So I am fully, fully appreciative of, of the team and what they do and everybody who's out there and what they do. And once again, I don't understand the revenues for auto and neither does, neither. My prior counterparts or any auditor friends I have that do municipal auditing, they, they throw their hands up.
The best explanation for me was from Eileen about four, five, six months ago when she said, younger folks today are not like when we were younger, we were out, we wanted to buy our first house. Now they're, you know, a lot of them are content living in the nice apartments and so on. And they will get their new lease car every three years. That's the only thing that makes sense to me.
That and used cars are going through the roof. Can't buy a used car, you know, a Corolla used to buy for 5,000 dollars. Now you can't get a used Corolla for under 18.
But it's, it's important to notice that you only went back to 2009, 2010 on this chart. And it looks like it goes up, almost straight up from there. But before that, for half a dozen years or more, it was coming down.
Yes, it was.
In that period between 2004 and 2009 or something like that, we were seeing drops and, and that was very concerning and.
Right, I, I think it, as, as everything else correlates with interest. If the interest rates are high, people aren't out buying the Cadillac Escalades and the brand new Beamers because, you know, 600 dollar.
Right now, there's no interest.
There's no interest, so they can get the car for 400, 500 a month versus 6, 700 a month if they have to pay interest on it.
My first house cost this.
Costs what? Oh, mine was 220. 220 dollars a month for my first house. It was 20,000 dollars then Tucson, Arizona, a few years ago, but. No. Tucson, Arizona had a lower cost of living than New England does. But anyway, great, thank you, Tom, appreciate it. Which brings us to minutes. We have minutes from May 13th, 2021 that were tabled on May 27th because some of the activities were out of order. They went by the agenda order rather than the meeting order. And I wanted them to get them re-straitened out, so, which I think they look a little better now. So do we have a motion to approve the minutes of May 13th, 2021? Moved by Barbara, seconded by, by Nancy Murphy. Sorry, I wasn't, I was waiting for a hello. Do, are there any other, any changes or corrections to the minutes? No, nothing? Anybody else have any thoughts or comments on the meeting minutes? I wasn't here for most of the meeting and when I was here, I wasn't here.
Didn't reflect when you and Lon left.
And Lon left the meeting. I didn't realize that Lon stayed for another 20 minutes or so. That's great. But I was in Texas and.
On the side of the road.
On the side of the road, literally, in the sun. It was, we couldn't even find a tree to park under, it was crazy, but. So if there are no other, other changes, any changes, the motion was to approve the minutes as written. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? Andy Hunter is abstaining, so that passes 6-0-1 for those minutes. And then we have minutes for the, not the 13th, but the 27th.
I move to approve as written.
Motion made by Nancy Harrington and actually seconded by Barbara Healy. She got, she got ahead of you by about quarter of a second there. Any other changes, additions, deletions, modifications? I actually had a comment I was going to make on the previous minutes, but not that it really matters. Just the last comment said that meeting adjourned and then had the motion. And this one has it in the order that says the meeting adjourned after the motion was passed, so that's great. Barbara?
Yeah, that's on.
Oh, go for it.
Okay, on page two.
Two?
On page two, line two, the ration, it was read kind of funny, which was hard to find at, it says this time, it should be that time because it was in the past. Then on line 11, you notice we got some funky spacing going on here? That's a technical term. So all this indenting, Chairman Koenig on line 11 should be over. Same thing with line 15.
You can put me all the way to the left, sure.
No.
It'll be clearer.
On page five, line 20, wants to update this to reduce the scope down. Are you okay with that?
He wants to update this to reduce the scope.
You could just say reduce the scope.
Not sure what it says there.
Yeah, I, I can't remember what Tim had said, but it just seemed kind of redundant.
Yeah, I would think just leaving the word down out is fine.
Yep, just take out the word down.
He may have said down, but.
And then on line 48, it has forested area adjacent to the home along, it says Eagle Drive. It should be Falcon Drive. And on page, my last one? On, on page six, line 17, Council Healy shared that when the council went to visit the property, actually it wasn't the council, it was me.
So when she went to visit.
Yep, when she went to visit. And then the last one I have is on page nine, line eight. It says near the town line, B B Lane. It should be B E E B E Lane?
B B, that's cute.
And then down on line 39, it gets a little wordy through here. The town council to consider acceptance of a donation from Mosquito Joe. It should be for services, not of services, for tick control. And then the same thing in the motion, it says on 44, line 44, Mosquito Joe, for services. And it can't say up to control. And that's all I have.
Any other corrections or changes? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the minutes as modified signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? That passes 7-0-0. Which brings us to comments from the press, comments from the public, comments from the council. Recognizing Fenway.
I just was driving by, I can unlock my phone, hold on. I was driving by Pete and Nancy Gagnon's home over the week. I was driving by, thank you, Pete and Nancy Gagnon's home over the weekend and saw Dave Gagnon, whom I met for the first time, putting up the sign for the celebration of life. And so I told him I would pass the word on that they're going to be having that celebration of life for Nancy and Pete Gagnon, June 26th at noon time. You can respond if you'd like by calling a number or just show up. So I don't, won't have to bother with the number because he just didn't know how to get the word out and he, so I thought I'd start that.
Great.
And it's on their property.
Yeah, the sign's right on the property, go around the curve. Yeah, and where they, at their house, yes.
Did they sell that?
He did, which bummed me out a little only because, yeah, and, and he said they, they actually spoke to a few people, kind of interviewed them before they would sell it and, because they wanted to make sure that people were as invested in the property as they were.
Not just ripping everything down and putting up an 18 apartment building or something.
Yeah, so they were quite happy with the choice that they made. So I was happy for them.
Good, nice.
And then the last thing, which this is kind of old news, they should have mentioned this a month ago, but Fidelity, my wife wanted me to know that they did a phenomenal job with everybody involved with the vaccination site. And Fidelity was very gracious and good, so I thought I'd pass that on too, but thanks.
Yeah, I had heard that too, just from communicating with them, that they went over really well.
Yeah.
That's good. Okay, if there's nothing else? You had something, Barbara?
As part of the 275th commemorative activities, we did a cookbook, a recipe book. And some of you already know this because I've already sent out emails to all of the contributors. But the new, the book is in and it's 20 dollars. And right now they're available here in town hall in the town manager's office.
I didn't even know I could get to the town manager's office.
Yeah, well, you can.
Detour. The general government area.
There you go.
I just, I just literally thought of something.
Okay.
Probably not a good idea at the end of the night.
That thought just kind of wandered in?
It just wandered in. It was like a divine intervention, inspiration. I would like to consider, maybe it will be in association with the 275 group. It's going to be the 20th anniversary of 9/11 this September. And I think we should do a deliberate plan for this September.
Matt is working on it.
Oh, terrific. So he had the divine inspiration before me.
Yeah, he's doing it separate from the 275.
He is, okay. Because it is 20th is a momentous, so thank you, I'm glad to hear that.
We had done a couple of things, but we blacked off a lot late and so that's a great idea. And I'm glad Matt's ahead of the game on that. Thank you.
Not surprising at all.
Not surprising, no, it isn't, but. Well, okay. All right, if there's nothing else, Lon, you said?
Yes, I did.
Oh, you want to adjourn now?
Motion to adjourn. Sorry to wake you up there, buddy. I apologize. So there's a motion to adjourn from Lon Woods, seconded by Barbara Healy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That passes 7-0-0. We are adjourned at 9:35. Thank you.